Morning, everybody. Welcome to the uh. This is actually a business section, so we can and will vote on what we select today. So we don't have to get back to a future council meeting. So that's whatever. So I call it main order. And Will take it away.
Thank you kindly, sir.
We need to roll call or anything?
Hi, this I'll say for the record, all councillors are present except for councillor Nellin.
Yes, sir. We need to do another one of those checks from the last time we did our setting meeting where the very next council meeting, someone zoomed in and chastised us for like.
That's why we decided to do uh this also on.
It's all been noticed publicly there's zoom.
It was last time too, but.
I don't remember what I don't remember the issue, what is.
So attorney got online and complained.
So this is a fully open meeting, it's fully virtual as well, so people can drive in anyway. Was noticed a week ago or more than a week.
And and the 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 thing that the attorney Truman Stone did not realize last time was that the doors were unlocked and it was an open chamber. But the attorney Truman Stone chose to not drive down from his house in the Dundee Hills to attend the meeting. So for this particular session, we decided because the owl technology didn't exist two years ago, that we now can have an owl session.
And the doors are open.
Yes, sir. Good point though. Okay, so first of all, I'm just gonna, you already had a quick look at this, but I'm just gonna cover kind of what's on the wall with a bit of brevity and explain what process we've already done to get to this point. The existing council goals that were derived two years ago, those are currently up on the wall over here. And then the process to get to this point by using the mechanism of a B C C to avoid the possibility of an illegal serial meeting. We collected ideas for potential council roles from all of the councillors. And then staff sorted the list. Staff responded on an individual basis to councillors, once again, to avoid the possibility of a serial meeting. And then we were able to list which goals were recognized as being accomplished already and which ones still require some more work. The fruits of these labors that have set the table for today are currently on the wall. And what we have on the wall is the text that is in black is existing council goals, which at least one councillor has deemed to as yet be incomplete. The text that is in blue are suggestions that councillors have sent in for new council goals. The blue text has been organized into either goals which are project related, those which have a likely ending point in space or time. And then the goals that are ongoing or are are more aspirational things to keep in mind as we develop other policy or legislation, those ones are over in the continuous goals list. So we've broken this out a little bit. And for the record, I'd like to just record that I appreciate Scott's input in some of these ideas which helped me think about how to reorganize this slightly compared to last time. So what I propose to do today, first of all, is just take the time to work through these one at a time and see if they resonate with the councillors. See if there is any possible suggestions or text changes that may be suggested. And then that will allow us to come up with a more final form. We may get to a point today where we wish to pass this list by by a motion. But we may also feel we want to bring a more final draft back to council. That's entirely up to you guys. But I want to just take the time away from other business to have everybody able to weigh in. So any questions about the the process or understanding of the process before I lean into going through this?
As much as I don't like getting early on a Saturday go to a meeting, I really like the fact that we have this devoted time. That's not tacked on to a meeting that's already two or three hours. This is, this will be a lot more effective.
I concur councillor Kilburg, we all get pretty punchy at nine o'clock at night and it's not always the best. Okay, and one last thing, because it's public knowledge. When Elise arrives and we all do our fantastic best to keep good civility always in the room. Let's remember to speak with particular care and gentleness while she's here because she just experienced a terrible loss. So. Okay, so starting with project goals. Goal one. Continue to create and maintain a high level of customer service. Something we've already been working on, but it would continue as a goal. Objective one. And this is the logical fruits of the first effort, which is to create the citywide customer service standard. Create a departmental customer service standard for each department before July twenty twenty six. This would form the second part of the two-part customer service standard that was envisaged before. Yeah. And eh without any input, without any prompting from me. Eh Scott's department has already done this task.
Where to go, Scott?
Which nobody else has yet. So. And so just for clarity, does that seem reasonable to everybody? This would be a document, maybe a little shorter than the base document, but it would contain standards that are specific to code enforcement, library, police. It would not be um the more the more broad and general goals that are in the first document. Okay. Objective two, continue to streamline the process for issuing building permits. That's implementing Open Gov and other steps. And if you want to know a bit more about what Open Gov can bring us. It's very fortuitous that Scott's here, so I can say a little bit about it. Open Gov is the new software that will replace Trackit for permit tracking. They and Scott and the team have designed all of the pathways that documents flow to try to make them straighter and and easier. And also Open Gov has a web drawer, so it enables the public to go in and see exactly where their permit is at. So that's that's the objective. If I've if I've overstated that, Scott, please speak because I'm not the expert.
Thank you and honourable mayor. Yeah, Open Gov will uh help simplify the process for other departments as well beyond buildings, so planning, building, engineering, certain public works, permits as well as business licenses. So it's an enterprise system for the organization in terms of developing services and business licensing.
So.
Yes, sir.
But didn't we have like a goal of how long once somebody submitted a permit? What wasn't that something that we had talked about a couple of years ago or a year or so ago? Where it was like, you know, four, five weeks they haven't done.
And the standards which and the 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 aspirational standards, much of that is already done with Scott doing. Scott moved right ahead of the the process and has already enshrined those eh in that customer service document. Now, we may not always for um for a thousand reasons, we may not always hit the mark exactly, sure. But it certainly is a focus. And so, so yes, yes, sir.
I think the way that we issue permissions is very good. The problem is in getting complete permits from the applicant and the process and the length of the time that it seems to take to get all the information that Scott people need to do it. So uh but once they have an application, I think our process is going very well. Uh that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the by ha- by having, by taking the time which we've done over the last year to review all the workflows that go into getting Open Gov running. That I hope will help people on the front end know what they're asking for, what they're looking for. Okay, so if that objective resonates with everybody, I will leave it. I will notice that I'm gonna add an extra word, Peggy. It said I did write implement. So now it would say, continue to streamline the process for issuing building permits. Parenthesis, implement Open Gov and other steps.
Okay, I approve.
Thank you. Okay, so next goal two. Identify industrial land and attract employers to encourage family wage jobs. Objective one, unchanged. Work to bring land into the urban growth boundary to zone for light manufacturing within four years. And we're trying some slightly different approaches than we were discussing before. And is that something that still resonates with you folks?
I'd like to see us continue to do that. I I know it's gonna be difficult. But I think if it's not before our eyes on a continuous basis, then other things crowd in and we forget.
Was there, wasn't there an inventory someone did on a committee about all the land that we have the chunks of small industrial zone land? Is that, has that, that's been done correctly?
The yeah, the the Scott's team are fully aware of the different zoning and the inventory of all of that land. And in fact, by doing things like the craft industrial review, that has even more brought that into focus. So so we know what we have right now.
Good, okay. We don't need to add anything to that effect.
No. Okay, so I think that seems to resonate with folks. I'll leave it on. Scott, do you foresee any difficulties with that potentially?
Uh no, thank you. Will, I think we have third direction from your council on how to proceed with employment plans.
Okay, so the next thing, now I I may I might want to say about this one, this is an idea that I had, this is the only thing on here that's for me. And but it's also one that we might not want to approve today. We might want to keep this to one side as a potential goal, what, because that this needs some legal review, okay? But I just want to see if it resonates with council, because if it doesn't, I'm just gonna strike it off the list because it's just an idea. Which is implement a vacant industrial land tax to spur development. Just a concept. So in other words, if someone is holding a large tract of industrial land and seems to have little appetite to move forward with development. I'm curious to discover the legalities around adding some sort of tax to that to encourage them to develop the land and and create jobs and other good things.
I support it.
I support it.
Not too crazy?
I don't support it.
Then why, why is that?
Because it's currently not taxable. I I just don't like raising taxes in general. People may have various reasons for not choosing to develop the land. We're talking about small.
No, no, we're talking about the mill site primarily.
Oh.
No, there would be a, if it's legal, there would be some sort of rules around it, which I don't know what those are yet. It might be track contiguous tracks larger than twenty acres or some, whatever the whatever the standard is for a light industrial site. And I am so open to any comments you may have, Scott.
I don't have any experience with the type of taxi we're talking about. I know that cities have fairly broad taxing authority with certain public purpose and course and nexus, so we have a legal question on that.
Yep.
Uh I would say that I think that we might find some support at the state level, the state planning, the L C D. There's a investigating this and researching it, understanding whether it is something that cities may do because they're interested as well as local governments and making the lands already within the urban growth boundaries available in that double ready for development. So we have that land inside U V B as utilities to it. And there are other reasons that are beyond our control for making it available. Uh I think the state would work with us and investigate and have to see if it's.
Dylan, can you take a note of what Scott just said specifically? Should council agree with this point? Then that's another avenue for research. And okay, so over to you, Mr. Mayor, on this one. It looks like this one may not resonate with everybody. Eh is it, do you want to ask for more discussion or?
I think we should have more discussion, but first we need to determine if it's even legal, I suspect it. There's not a mechanism for doing that. Now that being said, I I'm sitting here gathering my thoughts. I would like to go back and talk about these last goal.
Okay, uh so on this one. Is this something that you desire staff to do more research on? I'm I'm not saying I'm gonna keep it in the list right now. We could add it to the list later after doing more research. Or is this something that just does not sit well with you at all, in which case we will just strike it?
I would appreciate your information. I want a little bit, I want to see if it's legal.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Okay, Dylan, could you please make a note that although that we're not going to add this one to the list for now. We have been authorized by consensus to look for more information about this concept of implement a vacant land industrial land tax to spur development. Implement vacant industrial land tax to spur development. For now, for the purposes of today, I will use this. Back to the last thing eh which was work to bring land into the urban growth boundary and zone for light manufacturing within four years. Yes, sir.
Well, the time one is not doable. Um but the first thing that we have to do is prove the need, which is going to be the housing production strategy and what's the other document? Uh which we put off until twenty six, correct?
Yeah, the housing capacity analysis comes first, so the new deadline is twenty twenty seven on that. By as word brought in as a housing production strategy and that's due in twenty twenty eight.
And then the fact is, it's impossible to bring land into the urban growth boundary in Oregon in in that short timeframe. Once we make application, we're going to be challenged by a thousand friends of Oregon, a thousand friends of Anheal County. And it's gonna be tied up in the court for literally years before the thing's done. So I uh I I agree with the goal. But the timeline is not realistic.
Can I suggest a change from having read a few of these cases to eight years?
Yeah, clearly, you mean, uh you're discussing employment and industrial land.
Bringing industrial land into the Corbin House.
This is industrial.
Yeah, so we're, we're one step into what is a three-step process on that. We have the inventory that you asked about earlier, councillor Kilburg. We have uh some preliminary work on that, but it is at least a three and possibly four-year process to do that, notwithstanding any appeals, so. I think if you give us a a reasonable target, a deadline, and if we wanted to say five years, we can push for that and provide work plan and schedule that you get us there with these other contingencies that we, as you said, Mayor, we have no control without.
He says.
Goal, we can, we can strive for that.
Can I suggest that we could make application within five years?
I believe that's.
Yeah, complete the application process.
That's good.
Make applications to bring land into the urban growth boundary to zone for light manufacturing within five years.
That's real, yeah.
Did you capture that, Dylan? Thank you, sir. Okay. And next. Enhance community safety. Work, o- objective one, work with Newburgh School District to provide an additional school resource officer. This was a goal we thought was completed and then went backwards. So eh this the suggestion on the table is to keep this on the list until a new contract is signed.
Yes.
Does that resonate with everybody?
Yeah, I I would agree.
Next, another project where we're going back to the beginning. Uh so this week, we sent the Elevate Company termination of service letter because they had a thirty-day cure notice period and they failed to be able to provide us with the services that we were contracted with them to provide. So we currently have canceled the contract with the Red Light Camera Company. Yeah. And formerly known as Conduit. So that means, having got some legal advice from James, we would have to start all over again with a new R F P. I asked James if we, if it was legally possible for us to just go to the next highest eh score to speed this process up, and he said that was not legally possible. But we will have to start all over again. Hence, the retention of his goal, his objective to install red light and speed cameras and other speed reduction measures within two years.
How long is the R F P process?
It would be a minimum of three months. Because you, I'll have to start by writing a new R F P. I'll then have to have a good period to to take in comments, senior staff, because this touches lots of departments. Then I'm gonna have to have an open period of three or four weeks for bids. Then there would be a bid review of a couple of years. I would say probably something like that.
So. Couple of questions. One is, have we paid this company all the money that they were due, or are we holding some?
We're not paying anything.
We haven't paid them anything yet. Okay.
And we're not going to.
Is, is it easier? Cause a lot of the, I mean, everything, the infrastructure is in there, it's just for some reason not working. So is, is it simpler just to somehow work with them and go, guys, let's get this done because or is it simpler just to go to somebody else because everything's already in? It ought to be easy for somebody else to come along and implement the software if that's the problem.
Yeah, sure. Look, I might take those as two separate things, councillor May, right? So the first one is, we've been working with Elevate for nearly a year to get them to perform the scope of services that were requested. They, they have eh James gave me that look when I talked about this at council. So I've got to be careful what I say here. Eh my James is imaginarily on my shoulder.
That's good.
In in many areas, it has, they have been deficient. There have been many things that were not provided to us in not just in terms of the the data transfer, but in terms of the timeline to get the cameras installed. The timeline to figure out what the standards would be for the data transfer. Missed meetings, we have been really working hard with these guys because we didn't want to start over. And we're, we and the city judge are all very frustrated right now, especially the honourable Judge Blake is tired of this as well.
More than patient.
Yes. And with regard to the second part of your question, while the pipe and the fiber optic cable will remain in place, the actual cameras that belong to the company will be removed because those are the property of the company. So a new company will have to install its cameras on presumably the same poles.
The timelines are reasonable for that kind of company?
We have provided them with a deadline of a week and a half to remove their equipment.
And what if they don't do that? If they've been deficient and all this other stuff, if they don't do that, do we have the authority to have our guys go in and remove them or we buy them something or what's, what's the mechanism to make them step up to the plate?
I would then refer it to our legal department to see what the consequences would be if our public work staff removed the cameras. So I I I don't know the answer to that. But yes, it has crossed my mind. Okay, so sorry, folks, you know this was something we really wanted eh.
We're not giving up, it's just the mic.
Yeah. So the thank you, Rachel. The next thing is goal four. Create and maintain a high level of transparency with our residents in order to build trust. Objective one, expand communication outreach in regard to city, to regular city events and additional involvement with city businesses by the end of twenty twenty six. So I will register, however, that 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 Emily and the rest of us intend, as soon as the city's website is finished, to start doing a lot more public communication. That's, that's the next thing on Emily's work plan after the website is up and running. And the website is on schedule and under budget to be launched on February the tenth. So, yeah, let's hope it works when they click the switch, right? So that eh that's setting us a goal that we're going to change how we do public messaging with a bit more effort. The sorts of tactics that that may create would include things like many videos where we talk to staff doing a thing so the public can understand why a, why, why are hydrants exercised? Why must elaterals be replaced? How we patrol our city to observe for signs of criminality. All those sorts of things, there'd be little videos, that's one strategy. And then also just Emily pivoting away from this designing the website and contract work to doing more of that. So if that resonates with folks, I mean, uh seeing twenty twenty six, that's really eh we're going to, we're going to start this very soon, but you're gonna feel a difference. You know, and then, of course, I might be interviewing you guys on other things. Cause that's part of it, right?
That's.
Okay, so this, yes, sir.
Sorry, uh on that, can you, I know um some of the councillors and if the mayor, I think you have their own personal social media things that they message to the community under their official capacity. Can we link that to the website so people can be directed to see these things?
One hundred percent, one hundred percent. Dylan, can you please make a note of that as an action item that we will add a hyperlink from the new website for the communications page that can link to some of the Facebook messaging? If 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 that's what the person desires, of course.
This kind of funny coming from the oldest bedroom, but I understand that there's other kinds of social media that young people use. Are we, are we adapting into that as well?
Yes, Emily already has got us with an Instagram account going. And we're imagining the Instagram videos would be where we would host those videos. Cause we know that folks of my generation tend to be on Facebook. Folks of this eh more vibrant generation tend to be on Instagram.
And I know which are also programs that once the city sends something out, they can go to all of those platforms.
We already have it. Yep, that was something Emily added like two years ago. And Emily's about to start her master's degree, so she's, she's going to run, I don't know if she's doing it yet.
Do I mean, what is?
All public administration, which is usually what P I O's of agencies have as a master's, public intervention officers. Okay, so this eh next thing is, this is really taking the fruits of our labors that we've already done and tying a bow on it, so to speak. During the last couple of years, staff have been directed to have work sessions prior to decision items to set a firm seventy. To set a firm seven day publication schedule. For items coming before council to give council time to read them. Saying that any documents with a hundred pages or more must have an executive summary. And. Looking to streamline, and actually this is a new one, looking to streamline our parliamentary procedure slightly. Because, um, we are operating right now with council rules that we inherited from several administrations ago, as you know. So the idea behind this goal, and I'm gonna read it in full now. Would be to tie all this together and make it kind of permanent. Develop a new streamlined council rules. Sorry, I misspoke. Develop new streamlined council rules. To institutionalize our administrative enhancements. This will include the following enhancements from the last round of council roles. And then all of the items I just said. Work sessions prior to each decision item, seven day publication schedule for council packets. Executive summaries on very large sets of documents and. Adding a more streamlined parliamentary procedure. Because the current council roles have been broadly seen as a little bit, um, present type. Perhaps, a little bit bureaucratic.
So. Go and elaborate on the parliamentary procedure, what is it that we wanna take on?
Would you like to?
Would you like me to? Cause I can get some input.
Yeah.
One of the simplest ways to do this and the way that's recommended is to switch to, um, Robert rules of order for small boards. It's just a simpler version of it and it's recommended for boards under like twenty or thirty in, in size. And since we're only seven, small board rules make a lot more sense. They are simplified. I have a summary document sitting on my desk right now. It's a page and a half with just the basics. Um, so if we switch to something like that, that would simplify our parliamentary procedure. Uh, I've also, after we were asked at council to review the council rules, I've been working on that right now. And a lot of what I've done is just clarifying and, um. So far, I'm working on the first draft and you will see many drafts before it even comes to you guys for more review. But I'm trying to simplify things, make it very clear. And take away repetitious language, make sure that it's, um, that it's easy to understand. So hopefully it'll be a lot more, um, simple to follow and things like the scripts that you follow for ordinances. Just make them very, very basic and easy to walk right through instead of trying to figure out the fine details. So that's what I'm working on right now.
Oh, wow.
It was the script thing that gets us every single time.
Well, I thought that that was some type of.
The, these steps are mandatory, but we can make sure that the script is easier to follow.
I would like that because I, I get tripped up.
That's every time we don't know.
It's goofy, yeah. It is.
So, so after that request was made at council and approved by all of you. This is something we've already begun work on, but this would give me even further direction or how you'd like. Your first draft to look at, of course, it's your decision, your rules, but I'm drafting as much as possible for you.
And by our own rules that we have to give these measures a second reading, is that correct?
Um, there are some state rules and it's also, there's. Language in our code that requires some of the second readings as well. That's one of the things I'm doing is everything that's in the council rules, making sure that it complies with our code. Um, complies with state law and, um, making sure that it's, um, clear and easy to follow.
We always wave the second reading, it'd be nice, but you just take that out. Yeah, I would say that too.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's one we can ditch or not, but.
Okay.
It's worth looking at.
Definitely.
And this, uh, goal is just to launch the ship. We'll have many chances to review the ideas to see if that's the thing we want to do. I would also, um, opine that this will help some departments understand better. What, what the deadlines are. It will also affect how some of the subcommittees work, create a bit more uniformity and clarity. I think so that resonates with everybody leaving it on.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the next one, goal five, implement a careful and prudent fiscal policy. Objective one. Begin reducing and eventually eliminating the city's debt in a steady prudent way. Without compromising the city's ability to provide essential services and functions. This is an existing goal that we have been doing. And I, I will say that Katie is going to be asking council. At the next council session, whether this is an objective that the council still wishes to pursue. And that will be in the context of property tax increases discussion. So I don't want to get too deep into that because Katie's gonna cover that in detail. But there, there may be a trade off here that might have to happen. We can't do everything. So it may be that it might come down to, do we keep doing this or? Do we, uh, or is it better to not do? A second property tax increase in the second year of the biennium or whatever. But she's gonna be covering that in tremendous detail. Really, that's not a settled matter, I think. So maybe I'm just asking, should we leave this on here for now?
Yeah.
Well. I, I, I think it's worth some discussion, uh. Debt reduction, I mean, if we make that our primary goal, then we go get a bond for a water plant. Then we're contradicting our, our own goal. Uh, debt reduction is admirable and you're the first city manager we've ever had that. Consider that as important as you do. Uh. But I'm not sure that, I, I think it's worth, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Can, can I, before we do that, Honourable Mr. Mayor, can I just create? What the path might look like with debt reduction and then without, and I'm not, I'm not. I'm not leaning in conversation one way or another. This is your decision. So with debt reduction. The plan was to first get rid of the low hanging fruit, which is the communication tower debt, which is general fund debt. And then, second. Use any remaining system development charge revenue in the wastewater area. To finish our D E Q loan early. That would leave the city at that moment in time debt free. Then, but to your point. We would have to take on some debt to build the water plant later. So. The con, the goal of completely eradicating our debt is not achievable within the time span of my career. But we might imagine that some younger and more vibrant city manager. After I am gone, may pick up that standard. And can, and then work on getting rid of the W F I A debt for the water plant. So maybe that's a bit of my dreaming coming into the words there, but, but, but I mean, I, I. You know, conversely, if we do not make it a primary goal. We would still act as fiscally conservatively as we can. We just wouldn't carry that standard in that way. We still. We, we might allow the communication tower to retire naturally, which would be a couple of years later. We might still choose to buy off the D E Q debt if we can afford to. But it wouldn't necessarily be a goal because to the mayor's point. If it's not something that we can guarantee to do. Within a twenty year planning horizon, should it be a goal? To put it the other way. And now I will relinquish the floor.
I, I get it that we, we will always carry some debt, especially if we do bonds to do these huge projects. What if we just said minimize debt or reduce this debt and this, or eliminate this debt and this debt? On a. What's the word you use for that? Well, you know, faster pace.
Pick out specific things that we could.
Yeah, just especially communications tower. How far out are we with that one? If we, if we stay aggressive.
Unfortunately, we are in a very poor position because of all the. All the revenue streams that I invented to help reduce our debt have all gone away.
Yeah, for now.
So, um, so we've got hundreds of thousands put aside, but not where we should be at this point. And Katie's got a slide in her presentation for the next council session to give you all an exact update on where the sinking fund. Is at. And. This could be rewarded to be a little lighter, but still retained. What, what do, what do you think?
I'm in favor of retention, uh, because if you have this goal, even though you might have to come so long away. It keeps it in the forefront of council's thought process and for the rest of the city. You know, for example, I have a goal at home to be debt free, but things happen. Kids need a car or whatever, or you know, some disaster in the house that puts me into some debt. But the goal is always to eliminate that debt. I just think that if you keep it there is, keeps the focus on it.
I agree.
I would agree.
I think we need to stay in the course and then when the water plant comes up, we'll have to take care of that.
If we say, what did you say? Debt free, be debt free or eliminate all debt or?
So the, the existing one is. Begin reducing and eventually eliminate, eliminate the city's debt in a steady prudent. We did really good on this last time. In a steady prudent way, without compromising the city's ability to provide essential services and functions.
I don't think there's, I think that that's fine, that wording. I mean, you're, you're gonna try to, you know, you don't wanna. Be a detriment to any of the services that we provide, but you're gonna try to, I.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
We cannot know what will happen with the water plant, but we do know that I'm getting an early little tickler that's saying. The new site looks better. I don't have the report yet, but I'm, I'm. Hearing that it's less liquefiable soils at the new site that we're looking at. So that gives me some grounds for optimism on cost reduction. I've cut the plant design spec to nine mega gallon and extensible rather than ten mega gallon. I've cut all of the bells and whistles that the old design had.
Yeah.
It will have a toilet and a control area.
No meeting room?
Does it have a sink?
It'll have no meeting. There will probably be one deep sink. With our staff.
One deep sink?
Yes, okay. With our staffing profile that we have, we don't need those things. P L C, programmable logic controllers, points the way towards more automation in the future. We already have a building that has a conference room that has these other things in the wastewater plant. And then the new site is adjacent to the wastewater plant. It's a short five minute walk to go back to the conference room. Sure. So that's my thoughts to try to get the new, plus also. Taylor Engineering has proven themselves to be honest and reliable partners so far. So that's, I'm hopeful we'll get some cost control. Yes, sir.
I would like to say to you, good job. Thank you. That's, that's what, that's what we need. Yes, I would agree.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so if we keep this one. The next one, which naturally flows from the first one, is reduce elements of the municipal billing statement. Now, this was added because the objective was if we could clear the communication tower debt. We could then cancel that communications fee line item. Because they were approximately awash on revenue from the general fund. About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Or that's what they both are. That would take a line item off the billing statement, a line item that is about. Forgive me, this is not an exact number, I don't remember precisely. It's approximately thirty five dollars a year. Is what that is. Katie's going to bring the actual number to council next session.
That, that was supposed to come off this year, wasn't it? Twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six?
It was supposed to come off in twenty twenty six, like in the summertime.
Okay.
So it's, it seems like, um. With all of the, the growth, the building that's been going on and, you know, that's gonna be happening soon out the. End of, uh, Villa Road there, you, you're gonna have. More revenue coming in off of people's utility bills for that, so. I think we ought to be able to pay things off a little quicker, shouldn't we?
No. So currently, currently our growth in costs on the staff side have outstripped our new revenue. We have only had a very modest number of rooftops come in this year compared to the heady days of twenty twenty two. Currently, and Katie's gonna show you more about this next week, next, uh, council session. Currently, with increases like a potential fifteen percent increase in our insurance rate. With a pairs hike that is, I don't remember the number, was it? Rachel, do you remember? Seven and a half percent pairs hike?
I think it was about that much.
Right, coal is at four percent, which we need to do to keep our staff. All of that has outpaced the amount of construction that we've seen so far. Now, if we suddenly started seeing two hundred rooftops a year. That would be a game changer on the property tax side. But that has not been the year we had experienced. And you may, now let me say that there, there's a good thing about this. It's a bad thing and a good thing, like so much of what we do. The good thing is the water issue about production problem. That has pushed back a couple of years. If we keep seeing more modest rooftops coming in, that gives us a bit more bandwidth. And my good friend Jim Talt did a very thorough analysis. Where he created a number of trend lines for different construction scenarios. It could be now that we won't hit the water problem until thirty five or thirty six. If these low construction numbers continue forward.
Now, Colin is predict, predicting a hundred units a year. Once they start construction, which would be. Twenty six.
Yes, that could happen. And if that does come to pass, we'll be back at a hundred and fifty to two hundred rooftops.
Could you explain again, the communication tower, is that being paid off through the? The, um, what was that fund, the slush, what do you call it?
We don't have any slush funds.
Okay. Thank you. That's being paid from the sinking.
Current, current, currently the debt is serviced from the general fund.
Okay.
Because it was a police project.
Okay.
But. We've been putting money aside in a fund called the sinking fund, which we set up. Because of the goal. And the idea was to get it to a high enough number that we can pay off the debt. And then presumably we would start again on another piece of debt.
And you're saying it's becoming harder and harder.
No, well, more, it'd be more accurate to say we just haven't seen the revenue, the revenue side is off.
The traffic camera was, was forecasted to be a large part of that.
About their property.
Butler property, the S R O money. All of these things would help the general fund so we could put more aside in the sinking fund, cause that's the pot that it lives in.
Those are delays, you know, they're not dead ends.
Katie said to me yesterday, we can still get there. By the summer of twenty twenty six. If everything goes right from now on. Okay, so we've got to crank out another contract. We've got to get that S R O deal signed soon. We need to sell the Butler property.
I, I think we stay the course.
So stay in the course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. This is one we had never really started because we never had time. We were too busy doing internal reforms of all of our A P system codes and our policies. Ensure the city has a long term financial plan that supports its goals and objectives. We did not have the bandwidth to do that. One of the things that we have an advantage in is that we now have a two year budget cycle. So what that means is that on the off year, Katie can work on developing a long range plan. So what that means is that on the off year, Katie can work on developing a long range plan. That does not mean we haven't done anything on this. One thing that we have started doing over just the last two years is now we're modeling our budgets four years out. That's the first step of building a long range financial plan. Is we now build that model and take our trend lines, including capital improvement trend lines, out for four years. So that's the, that's the bedrock of that. But we haven't written the document, we haven't written a draft, we haven't bounced ideas off of council.
Well, I would say that that what we just talked about, our last goal, I mean, that is long, long term planning, long range planning. But yeah, the the official document, that's something to look forward to.
And unlike other cities of our size, I do not propose to use a consultant. You know, I never use consultants unless I can avoid it. So we would build that in house, presumably we do it one and off year. Does that still resonate with folks? Sorry, we haven't done anything about this really yet, it's. Okay, Katie and I talk about it like every two months. Okay, um, this is a suggestive new objective within this goal area. As a secondary focus to the maintenance of our existing roads. We will begin to convert small sections of the gravel streets to modern paving. Now, let me explain what that might look like. If we get to the end of a tough cycle, transportation utility fee cycle. And we find ourselves, perhaps because we have not been able to have. And everybody lined up, the contractors are hard to line up. So we don't have enough capacity to finish off with the money that we have for that year. We might start doing just very small sections of. The gravel streets, I mean a block or two, and slowly, slowly chip away at that over time. To bring them up to the modern standard. It would also be depending upon the agreement of the community members who live there. If they say no, we're not going to fight with them because it's costly on that road frontage. Let me explain to the uninitiated about why I mean, many people here know this stuff, but Jerry, you might not know this yet. Every time you go to build a street, you have to take twenty four to thirty six inches off of the people's. Frontage because the state makes us do wide sidewalk improvements. The traditional way cities do this is to pay people lots of money. For small pieces of strips off the front of their property. I'm not proposing that we do that. I'm proposing that only if those neighborhood people give us their land freely. Then we will go up to the edge of their property. And then if the next group of people in another year would let us, we'll do another little bit. So in other words, a property owner could turn off the process if it gets to their house and they block it.
I was wondering if for the whole block or just that one house?
Well, it would stop our progress. That's, that's how I'm thinking about this, because we don't have the money to do the the big Elliott Road. There, we're focused on river instead. River's the next big one. Everybody feels that's appropriate. So I'm talking about just chipping away at it. Because they call me every three or four months, saying it's shameful. When will you start doing something about this? And and I always have to say we don't have the money to do a full scale capital project.
Okay.
The downside, I could tell you what the downside of this is, because it has a downside. It's not cost effective. Uh this is a non-cost effective way to do this, because you have to pay a mobilization fee and other fees to the companies. Several times to get a decent road section. Yeah, because they are gonna charge you that mobilization fee to set foot on the ground.
This is instead of doing, having the buy in. Uh seventy percent of the homeowners have to pay to do this. You're saying the city would pick it all up?
Yes.
Okay, what what is it? Bill, you would know what it's called.
Buy in is, we would.
Yes, yes, normally, how it's been explained to me is seventy percent of the owners either buy into it. And that's when the road gets improved, and you're saying that process would not occur?
I'm I'm saying that we wouldn't spend the money to buy road frontage. They would have to.
They wouldn't pay anything. They would have to give us.
But they would give us the land for free.
But you just said O D A requires us to build the sidewalks out. It doesn't sound like this is. O D A saying you have to do it, but we're saying we're doing it differently. That's, it was contradictory.
No, and so we have to do the full improvements when we go to build a hardball road.
Oh, instead of paying them, they would just give it to, okay, same distance, okay, they just would not be paying, okay.
We wouldn't pay thirty thousand to him, twenty five to him, forty to her, thirty to her. We wouldn't do that.
Well, their property value is going to go up, so. That is an exchange.
So I, I mean, why would O D A make us if we're not using highway funds? I've always thought if you use the highway funds, then you have to.
I'm sorry, council, I'm right. Whenever, whenever we do these road improvements. If it's more than a one pass, eh easy thing, if it's any full scale road improvement. And especially if it's a full depth construction, it triggers all the A D A requirements by law. We cannot, we cannot just go in and just do just a hardball strip. With the irrigation ditches on the side, which would be a lot cheaper. Yes, sir.
So the city already owns right away, but those right ways were not wide enough to put bike lanes and all the other things that were being required these days. So could we consider making sure that what we do is within the existing right away? That way we don't have to to get, but uh we don't have to take land from the property owner. And that may mean making those one way streets, so that you can have bike lanes and a single lane of traffic inside the existing right way. And also, I'm I'm looking into this currently with a real estate agent, I'm gonna talk to Mr. Worf. And see just how much that's going to improve, the, that's gonna add to the value of all those houses. Those people bought those houses on gravel roads. They paid less for them because they were on a gravel road. So I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have some sort of a local improvement dis- district. And uh assess the value of that property, part of the value of the property to the property owner. Which then we could put a lien on the property, the next time the house sells, we get paid. We're actually increasing the value of their property by putting roads out there.
So, honorable mayor, I know that that's true. And there are ways we could design the cross section to use less with in some locations. The downside of what you're suggesting is a succession of fights with community members who don't want to sell. Or don't, or or refuse to be in a district. The classic example was Elliott Road.
Yeah.
Where we got into, it it's, it used two years of the city's energy to fight the battles with a couple of homeowners. Lo- lawyers became involved instantly. And in the end, the project took twice as long to occur, which then cost a million dollars more. And of course, there were other factors involved in that overreach, which I'm not gonna go into right now, but. It it the the downside, yes, sir.
Well, uh, the the fight over there was because we were taking away their parking and taking away part of their front yards. That's why I'm proposing that we consider building one way grid over that area. And that way we can have park, they can keep their parking on both sides of the street. They don't lose any land. And they get a a road in front of their house.
Okay, where are you specific? I, you're, so I think you're talking about something different than than river?
What's that? Gravel roads, Sherman and?
Okay, because we were talking about River Street there, but so gravel roads. I I always thought, oh, Sherman, that's on the north side of town. So the ones that are over here on the south side, I always thought they were in the county. Are they inside the city?
They were never in the county.
What do we have, three miles?
In fact, one, one citizen sent me an email.
Something like that.
Back in nineteen forty eight, the city of Newburgh said that they were going to start paving the gravel roads, and she's like, haven't we thought about it yet?
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so you're saying leftover tough money, we could start to tackle sections.
Very small bits at a time.
Yeah, I think that's.
Creating improvement district, and that becomes more of a of a larger project to look to do more at once. Eh, I I was talking about taking little nibbles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But but we can create the the lid first, and then do little sections at a time. I mean, this, I, you know, community engagement, I'm saying we don't close the door on that. I'm saying that we consider letting them participate in the cost of those roads there for, and to get a little more done.
And basically, we're not gonna ask them for any money. We're just putting a lien, so at some point down the road and they sell, then we get. But then, but then if we're gonna spend the money, though, where are we gonna get the money? We can't wait that long, I don't think.
And there's one other issue too. The traffic utility fee was designed for a very specific purpose, and I don't think paving gravel road was.
I already, I've already looked into that before, maintenance. That it can, it can be used for this purpose. The the way that it's written by a previous council does allow for this purpose. It's not the primary purpose of the revenue. The primary purpose of the revenue is to upkeep um existing sections. I can say that with the staff time, the uh, the staff bandwidth that we have. If we're going to do it the other way, it becomes more like a capital improvement project. Rather than what I was proposing, which by the way is not a problem. If we strike this off the list, I can make this a capital improvement project where we seek to do the sorts of things you're describing. That's how we would deal with it, within terms of our limits of staff time. See, I'm much more cagey, I've gotten over the last few years. More cagey and much more exhausted. So um that, but that's how I would handle it. Now, that's, that's an alternative approach. They're both, there's pros and cons. Looking at redesigning traffic flow, looking at local improvement districts. Making it a C I P thing so we can prioritize it along with our other capital projects. We could do that. That's not what that suggestion is though. But that might be the better way.
How many miles of gravel road do we have inside the city?
I just, I think there's like three.
I think it's three or three, four miles, something like.
Right, and what is, what's the cost on building a mile of road? Any idea?
Yeah, um, why didn't I bring that data table with me? It is something like. Four thousand dollars or one thousand square feet. So.
It's very.
Dylan, are you great at math on the fly?
Uh, I can give an area.
Okay, you'll do this, go go three miles. And assume a twenty five foot width. The turn miles to three miles into feet. Multiply by twenty five for an average road width. That'll give us our total area to be improved. Then we will quickly turn that into a dollar amount, not counting for legal disputes. Which will cost hundreds of thousands of extra dollars.
Well, you have the experience.
Well, there's two ways to peel this apple.
I, you know, you have experience going both ways. I like your idea, I.
Thank you, Dylan.
How many miles did you say?
We're working with the three, one cent.
Three point five percent.
Call it three.
I got three ninety six. What's, how many, how many feet in a mile, five thousand to one hundred eighty?
Yep.
It was four thousand per one thousand square feet.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't, yeah.
And that's smashed right out of my memory and it might be wrong.
One point six billion.
Yeah, but there's some missing dollars in there and I'll cover that in a minute. So does that check out, Dylan?
Yeah.
Roughly one and a half million dollars. Okay, so two things, first of all, that number might be wrong that I just gave you. And I can remember for a fact the grinding inlay is twenty two hundred dollars per thousand square foot right now, for this year. Eh twenty two hundred for grinding inlay, so I basically in my brain, I just doubled that, right? So let's say maybe just under two million for the actual road.
Right, no sidewalk.
No sidewalks, right? Then we're talking probably about. Another half a million for the sidewalk improvements and ramps. Two and a half million, then we're talking about if any of the pipes need to be replaced underneath, there'll be maybe another half a million. Yeah, three million, three million ish. Is the right number, right effect. But if you do the local improvement district, where each resident would pay some money in. To offset that three million and it become, it become a C I P project.
I just was worried that in the areas that we're talking about. I mean, I'll put myself in the spot. I couldn't do that. Yeah, you know, and you're talking about some of the most low income parts of Newburgh.
Right.
Which is why they, you wouldn't expect to get the money upfront. You'd expect to get it when they sold her house at a higher price, because it was, you know, a paper.
I feel really uncomfortable putting liens on everybody's houses. Are there like ripple effects? Like what if they can get like a key lock provider to the cars? It impacts your ability to get other loans. Not something that just. Well, the thing.
I don't know all the downstream impacts for the water.
Yes, but the main problem is, most of, most of the community doesn't understand the cost. They don't understand how this stuff works. So can we have open houses? Can we?
My experience is that when people have a dog in a fight, it will come to an open house. So if you notify every neighbor in that area, then say, these are the choices, what what do you want? You'll get them to get in.
Yeah. I mean.
That's true.
Yeah, whichever approach we do or don't do, we would do messaging and open houses and we do, we we do the whole song and dance, you know? But um. Okay, but back to the thing. So does this not super resonate right now? Should I strike it off?
Read it again.
Yeah, read it.
And as a secondary focus to the maintenance of our existing roads. We will begin to convert small sections of gravel streets to modern paving.
That sounds too much like a promise. Can we soften it? Does it sound like an aspiration?
We will explore. Yeah, that, yeah, I like the explore, open house, to see if there's a play.
We will explore the options.
Yeah, yeah.
Hang on.
You were, I got one word in, all right. Take a short break.
Yeah, let me see this, we'll make, and then we will do a short break. As a secondary focus to the maintenance of our existing roads. We will explore the concept of converting. Small sections of gravel streets to modern paving. Just for clarity, I did math, one point five eight.
Yeah.
One point five eight four, right, plus another million for pipe and and for sidewalks. Boom, three, three point, three point five million dollars, you have to gravel town, I currate. Of course, our friends in town will place in a lot of money to help.
That's very, that's very, that's.
How are you?
More pastries, more fruit, more coffee.
And then so if you get ahead of that.
So we do use local vendors every time, but I can, I can look.
Or maybe she'd start a little earlier.
I always try and spread the love as much as possible. I have none favorites, but I try and spread the love. If I had a little more time, I almost made some.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have.
I know, I'm sorry. So sorry. Well, it was early this morning, I kind of needed to know. I know. Everyone there. So you put that on your heat works or?
I'm really, really sorry for your loss. Dylan, did you get the wording of that? Hope your camera can really notice my scrolling handwriting.
Oh, really? I'm not artistic, I did, I, like handwriting was horrible. I have a print just to make it legible.
Right.
My cursing was horrible.
I had to do cursive. I, I literally did get the belt to some point.
They don't even teach that at school anymore.
They do at my kid's school. No, no, not the belt. No, 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 not the belt at the school, cursive handwriting. They stopped teaching it for a while. I, I used to do at least one class session on it when I found historical research and writing, so that students could actually read the things there.
And the Board of Education.
Thank you, sir.
But, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's probably. But they're starting to realize that.
They made me call my parents and.
And motor skill, I mean, typing, I guess, has some motor skill.
And that's why I don't like.
Because she's got really tiny little hands.
And, and the lectures that he would give you. Are you crying because it's so heavy? How do you think we felt on this week, you've done turk?
I'll bet there was some crying going on there too. Yeah.
Okay, folks, here we go. So our next thing is a new, a whole new goal area. Revitalize the appearance functionality and visibility of Newburgh's downtown area.
Functionality and appearance?
The appearance functionality and visibility of Newburgh's downtown area.
What do you, that's meant by visibility? That's different than appearance.
I'm not sure.
Paint.
Who, being, being more interesting for people to come.
Or what if we change visibility to safety or something? Like safety, like.
I probably did, but I don't see it on this list. Can you, I have to be able to see it.
So, 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 so some of them, when they came.
That was.
And I took two thoughts and made them into one coherent.
I put downtown, maybe there were like a couple of combines.
Yeah.
Notice it, can you read it again, cause?
Yeah. Revitalize the appearance. Functionality and visibility of Newburgh's downtown area.
Yes.
But we can change some of the words if we want to other words like safety or.
Well, I'd like to know what functionality means in that context as well.
I don't even know what the.
What would relate to it is.
Okay, I didn't say functionality, but could the sidewalks, I mean, there's several big gouges in the sidewalks. Is that? I mean, there, the sidewalks are pretty bad, the, the trees are pushing up the stuff around them, there's a lot of safety hazards down there.
I think you've just nailed it, and. That's functionality.
Okay.
Wow, Robin, there you go.
Are we, is that like appearance or?
Appearance is the first.
Isn't that a vision of parents?
It will, it goes revitalize the appearance.
Okay.
Is the leading clause. Functionality and visibility of Newburgh's downtown area.
I think it should say safety.
This same, let's change visibility to safety.
But visibility, that, are we talking about the? Appearance as well?
Maybe appearance.
I may add, is that related to like tourism visibility, like people recognize and think of our city, or maybe, is that what that?
Maybe. But, but we could trade it out for safety.
What's functionality?
Functionality is safety too.
It is. I think, shall we just drop, shall we just drop, um?
Yeah.
Visibility?
Draw functionality, I, I don't know, maybe I'm not on the.
Functionality needs.
I think, let's change, let's change functionality and put safety in there because I don't know that many people with, let's go and.
We have multiple, we have multiple thoughts on the floor. Let's take those one at a time. So let's start with. Appearance, do we keep appearance?
Yes.
Consensus. Functionality, do we keep functionality or do we draw functionality?
Well.
I see. Cause that's a thesaurus, find another word for.
Just wanna know what's meant by functionality. Accessibility.
Okay, usability, I like that.
Usability instead of functionality.
I like that.
Accessibility.
Usability, accessibility, I think that's better, either one of those.
What did you say there?
Usability or accessibility, I think either one of those is better.
Accessibility is a more recognized term.
But it has a connotation of being, uh, for handicap.
It does.
And that's really not, I mean, that's part of what we're after, but it's not a complete.
All of it.
Utility.
Usability?
Utility and usability are two that keep coming up.
This, I'd like to know what they meant by functionality.
Well, I think it's probably one of the ones we must combine from.
What about utility? I like, that's a good word, utility, like to use and.
Yeah.
Utility?
How about utilization? Increase the utilization.
We could say, if we do utilization, we could add safety, cause then.
Well, I think utility does the same thing in the context of this certain structure. So I think if it, it might be revitalize the appearance, utility. And utility of Newburgh's downtown area, if we want to draw visibility.
I like that.
What did I just say?
Appearance of utility.
That we're assuming safety's in there for utility.
Yeah, that's. Like trip hazards.
Yeah.
Okay, so Dylan. Revit, revitalize the appearance and utility of Newburgh's downtown area. Okay. Uh, objective one. By supporting NDC, seek funding sources for the beautification of the first street. In downtown historic area.
I think you need to make it longer.
Yeah.
We just ran.
It was like in partnership with NBC support. Instead of like us taking the lead on it, like in partnership with.
So currently it is by supporting. You're proposing a shift to, um.
Instead of.
An obligation.
What?
Right, so, so what, 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 um?
Instead of in support, I'd say in partnership.
In partnership with. Is that okay?
And is the plan just to focus on the one stakeholder for downtown? I mean, are there other people that might?
Say chamber in there as well and.
I just don't know, I don't know who it all, like we're limiting ourselves by. By naming one.
So, I may be able to answer this question or assist, but there's no question. Part of this goes to the Oregon Main Street Program, their entire focus is, uh, economical revitalization through historic preservation. So that is on the historic, uh. Sorry, the historic preservation commission's, uh, work plan is coming to you guys soon. Is part of it is this work is creating, declaring the historic downtown or, or looking into the idea and seeing if there's buy-in. Uh, and then supporting the NBC, so this will align with those. Because that is the specific mission of the NBC and there's a granting agency of federal and state funds available through them. That's why it was specific to NBC, but.
For sure, I just think that makes sense. The chamber and, and taste also have skin in the game for an autopsy. But I think that that bullet point specifically about pursuing funding is what Rachel just said, it could be left to NBC.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying the role of that Main Street program with regard to its local agent. Okay.
Why don't we add that in there, like to pursue what you wanted, about the, yeah, like we could.
I think it is, do you have Main Street program in there specifically?
Um, not specifically and it could.
I, I think we should.
Pursue, in, so in partnership with NBC to pursue. Grant dollars for the, grant dollars and reinstatement of the Main Street program.
I think you just added it to number one there.
Okay, that's, we're gonna have to break the sentence off then. Uh, right now we have, in partnership with NBC, seek funding sources for the beautification. Of the first street in downtown.
Sources comma and reinstatement of the Main Street program that continues.
Is that, that's a funding, or, or such as?
Okay, so, so hang on. In partnership with NBC, seek funding sources.
And.
Or could you say such as, instead of and, no?
And the implementation of the Main Street program.
And, and implement the Main Street program.
There you go, yeah.
It's taken me two years to figure out who does what.
I think that's fair.
Okay, so I would suggest. That that does away with the need for the beautification language because the beautification language that blows from that.
Yes, yes.
It also makes an easier sense.
But it is, there are people in the community that are gonna appreciate that we want to make the downtown look better.
Shall I make that separate bullet point then?
Well, at the top sentence, you could say revitalization and beautification of downtown as the overarching goal.
And it's already there.
Then done.
Okay. Sounds good then. We don't need to rework down there.
I think, I think that was a good idea, revitalize and the beautification when you get rid of the word appearance.
I agree. That actually.
Okay, one thing at a time. So I'm gonna finish this. So I'm gonna finish this bullet point, then we'll go back to the top level. Uh, goal. In partnership with NBC, seek funding sources. And implement. The main street program. To implement the main street program. In partnership with NBC, seek funding sources to implement the main street program.
Great.
Okay, back to the top level goal. The suggestion on the table is to remove a piece of revitalize the appearance and change it to.
Revitalize and beautify.
Revitalize and beautify.
Uh. Only right, you guys might all get to be on the, on movie stars. Derek, you already are.
Okay, let me say that cause that changes what you've already gone with. Revitalize and beautify the appearance. And utility. Of Newburgh's downtown area.
I love it.
Great.
You got that made?
I, I agree.
Okay. Writing poem. Next one. Objective two. Work with NBC and the Community Development Division Department. To explore creating a historic designation for the downtown corridor within three years.
What?
Is that more cool?
Yeah. Yes, exploring well is to explore.
And that.
And tested with the community and you all.
Yes, I like that.
Now. Let me see. Uh, cause my job is to think about SWOT analysis, right? One possible risk of this is that there may be business owners who are resistant to this concept. Because they may fear. That some of their control or some of their factors of their shop frontage may change.
Yeah. Slidewalks.
And I would say, yeah, I would agree with that. Look.
Right?
First you got.
So the exploring will have to obviously, but thank goodness we have Scott. So. The exploring will be involved lots of community meetings and engagement and we won't do something that they won't like.
Do you think we should add the chamber to that line since they're like the more take weed with the business owner?
What do you think? Add the chamber to that too?
How did you say stakeholders?
I think that's good.
So.
Of course, there's.
And others.
All stakeholders.
Stakeholders. Business.
Work with. All stakeholders to explore.
I like that.
Yeah.
The creation of instead of creating.
The creation of, yes.
To neighbors.
Yes.
You're right, to me, Mary. Skip for Dylan. Work with all stakeholders. To explore. The creation of. A historic designations for the downtown corridor within three years.
It's pretty hot.
Awesome.
Read that again.
So proud.
Work with all stakeholders to explore the creation of. A historic designation for the downtown corridor within three years.
Great.
Uh, I have the same renovation you just voiced about. Whether or not the. Building owners are going to be interested in. In being part of that.
They're gonna find out. They're gonna do, once we get that grant that. We're applying for, they're gonna go around and ask business owners.
So.
Get the flavor.
Do we make it a little more aspirational rather than?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Mayor. Exploring may keeps it very aspirational. Yeah. Yep. And what we want to do is what we were going to do last time, which is not listen to people and just stuff it down their necks. Okay.
But what, we're not gonna do that?
No, no point having a town hall if we're not trying to lead them to the right answer.
Yes, we're not doing that. Okay, the next one is. Preserve the balance between the needs of the tourism industry and preserving the character of our town.
That's fair.
So.
What is the intent behind that? Are, are people feeling like we're loose? We're.
I'm not sure what, what intent was there, but I will tell you that with the wine industry group we're working with. We're talking about branding Newburgh as the heart of wine country. Uh, we are, we have more wineries in the nine seven one three two zip code. Than anyplace else in the state. And, uh, I would prefer that Dundee work with us. Um. Don't know that that's gonna happen. I think they're happy doing their own thing. Like, there's contact with them with Ben Luton.
Curiously. That's been my experience too. So I, I think this is just the, this is the overarching goal. Within the idea of helping encourage this industrial, this, this agricultural aspect. So the first suggested, um, objective, which is already well underway is. Implement and codify the new short-term rental rules within one year. Which given where we're at right now seems quite achievable.
Brilliant.
It's great.
Okay. And then. Um. This next one, I would suggest may not be needed because now that we have a grant writer, we're never gonna stop doing this. All the right people are here today.
Yeah.
So it was seek to assist the community in obtaining statewide grants to improve the city. I would argue that might not have to be an objective because we are never gonna stop doing that. And all of these. All of the feeds from the state and the feds are all. Pouring into his inbox.
I would love if it was something like act as a resource or like. I'm trying to say like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That the city is seen as like a convenor of. Long-term financial planning.
Act as a resource to assist the community and keep the rest. Which we're also, we're definitely into.
Like how you've, you've said kindly to NBC that he could support with grant, like searching.
Yeah.
I'd like to though, Will, at some point along the way, I, I, I'm assuming maybe you've already. Thought of this, but if, if we're gonna use. Uh. Dylan here as, as, you know, to write grants for beautification of downtown or whatever. I think. That the owners of the buildings or the businesses downtown, they need to have a stake in the game where they. Pay for Dylan's time while he's writing grants maybe for them to beautify their building. I mean, is that gonna come into play at anywhere's along through this?
Um. Well, it's a new idea, so I don't know.
Okay.
So how does this resonate with everybody else?
Well, considering that NBC is asking us for money, I don't know if they're gonna be able to. Pay for.
Yeah, but they're representing the businesses. So if, if there's a business downtown that wants. Us to apply for a grant because we have the experience. They should be willing to pay. For the staff time if it's five hours, 10 hours, 20 or 30 hours, whatever. That should be their stake, their skin in the game. I mean, if I came and. Wanted to get something, I mean, I would, I, I would be expected to help do something.
But he's paid through tax dollars to support everybody in the city. So he's being paid by them already. He's already supported by the community.
That's, that's true, but.
That's like double, double.
That's very specific. We're trying to have a very coordinated, intentional effort on downtown. And I get what you're saying, like broadly speaking for the city of Newburgh, but as it pertains to downtown and we're kind of throwing all of our cards on the table to push this.
Oh, I, I, I get that, but we could, we could be spending a lot of time and resources. For him to be doing that. If it really catches on. Um.
I don't think I mean like he would support the cameo to do a grant. I'm more so meaning like a large grant for the entire downtown core. So I get what you're saying on like a business specific grant. I wouldn't be supportive of that. I'm, I'm talking more like for the word downtown.
And the funding mechanism doesn't need to be in the goal.
Right.
That I could see it maybe if somebody approached the city, a business owner said, hey, could we?
Right.
Could you guys write it? You know, we'll use your expertise, pay you X amount per hour, but. But we're doing it anyway. The city, I don't think we start charging them.
I have an idea that could maybe square this circle. We could add a line item to the municipal, um. Master fee schedule. That does not have to be invoked, but could be invoked. So we could add a grant writer assistance line item with a charge basis. And then if we're drowning. If we, you know, if we're getting a lot of these, we could invoke that charge basis without getting in the way of the helping. Other stakeholders.
Fine, okay.
Dylan, could you make a note that we need to figure out what our total billing rate is in buildup to add any charge in there?
Do you go back to that, right?
What's that?
Would you go back to that?
Yeah, I mean, I just, if we're gonna get one big grant. That's one thing, although. I haven't ever seen that really happen too much. It seems like it's a small, but small piece individual and, and. I just think that if, if somebody, you know, comes before us and said, oh, wow, you guys got a grant writer? I like that idea because I don't know anything about that. I want, I want you to apply for a grant. I like it, Dylan. Well, they should. Pay for that, I think, because. Well, he needs to be doing stuff for us. Maybe we can get some grants for some road improvements or whatever, you know? So when the cameo got a horse, a, a face left. Would that, would you wanna charge him for that? I don't, uh, maybe for. I, I'm just saying charge for what, whatever his. Hourly rate or, or whatever. Yeah, I think that that should. I mean, if you go to get a loan, the bank's gonna want you to put something down as collateral or, or you gotta pay five percent of the loan or 10% of the loan.
I think it's pretty standard though for. Cities to support their downtown businesses with these sorts of revitalization grants.
Yeah, I, I'm just throwing it out there. If there isn't any, any, you know, nobody feels good about it, that's okay. I like Will's. I mean.
I like.
It's, it's up to him. If he finds some, if he thinks that they should have to pay, then have that mechanism available.
Sure. Well, and I think he would be really thinking about his workload.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was just gonna say, logistically, so far, um, whenever I'm going to pursue a grant, before I do, I get permission to proceed from Will. So there's kind of a built-in mechanism.
That's right.
If I hear from somebody, I'm not just gonna start right in. He'll hear about it and if he has.
And it's certainly true that without adding on the municipal fee schedule, we, we would be unable to levy a charge. That's the basis of our authority to levy any charge.
Does the council need to approve adding that to the fee schedule?
Oh, yes.
That in your.
Yes, no, but when, when, when the, when the fees come before you, as they do every time, there would be a new line item.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the act as a resource to assist, to assist the community. In obtaining statewide grants to prove the city with a twist.
Okay.
Can I add, add one small thing?
Yes.
Specifically outline statewide grants. We might want to broaden that because there are a lot of.
Yeah.
Private granting organizations.
Oh, yes.
Shall I just say straight, straight white and leave grants?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Deal. Hey. Act as a resource to assist the community in obtaining grants to improve the city. Very general. Okay.
Do we need to say assist the community? I'm sorry, I can't find it and I don't have it. With this bad guess, uh.
Act as a resource to. Assist the community in obtaining the grants to improve the city.
And predict.
I would just say government to obtain grants.
And the value city.
Yeah.
Ah.
I'm just saying you're valuable.
I said.
But if we go to endeavor, now I'm, there's a, there's a subtle change there though, Councilor Kilburg. If we change it to endeavor. We're now telling him. To be the one driving the bus and going out to all the business owners. If we leave it as assist, then there, it's more like they're coming to us.
Oh, so they're coming to us, which kind of takes us back to Mike's concern. They're coming to us with broad ideas.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. I will, I will.
Okay. Cause I don't want him to spend his time doing door-to-door stuff when he should be getting his head down and banging them out.
Right.
Okay. Okay. So that concludes. The goals that have kind of stakes in the ground where we're gonna be getting and building things. And now we're going to move on to the second class of. Goals. These are ones that are. Not so concrete. But there are more things to keep in mind at all times as we write other policy, as we write legislation. As we do our daily business. Okay. So the first one is. Which I'm sure we will all agree is still good. Create and maintain a high level of customer service.
Yes.
We should always keep that in mind.
Right.
Next.
But we already, we have that over here. Do we need it in both places?
Or G one?
Well. This is more. We don't need it in both places. You're right. So, so I was making these more the aspirational thoughts and these as the things to do.
Yeah.
But that could, you're right, we could get rid of that.
Let's get rid of it.
Maybe the high level of customer service.
Okay. Ensure Newburgh infrastructure, roads, water, city employees is in good repair and supplied. Which had.
There's a.
Well, we're gonna have a discussion next month.
Remember right there, they're interviewing us to see if Newburgh would be a great city for that. Dylan, I'll be on that call.
So we'll need a, we'll need a headshot from you so we can show them that we.
I'll show them.
Yeah, yeah. You, you can be our, our movie star that they'll connect. I know the business. All right, of course you do. You know, deep in high places. I, I sure will make them happy to hear that.
He's already a professional in the field of movie studies.
And, and television, yeah.
We are back up and running on zoom.
We're the first to know.
So when I made that independent movie, why didn't I get you in? And.
Okay.
Okay. Right, so. Uh, back on, back on and go there. Now this next one. Um, I actually, as a staff remark to the next one, I actually think we don't need this. Because I think it's already covered in this one, one above. Here's the language. Keep the cost low for residents, balancing the needs of the city, supporting the retention of city staff. I feel that that is encompassed by the one we already agreed on. Ensure Newburgh infrastructure. Roads, water, city employees are in good repair and supply. Review capital annually. Focus on sidewalk repairs in certain districts. Um. Do we need this?
Well, it doesn't address, uh, what's it, what's it saying about the cost to the citizen there? Keep costs. Can you read that?
Yeah, really.
Well, keep costs low for residents, balancing the needs of the city, supporting the retention of city staff.
Well, similar to the one up above, but.
It addresses keeping the costs.
Yeah, I agree with you, Will. I, I think we take it out.
Does that? Resonate with folks? No hell to die on?
Not dying on that hill.
Okay, yeah.
I just want, I just think it's nice that we're saying we're trying to control the costs as well. You could go after.
We'll see, you have the debt reduction one where that talks about. Ballot.
Good in, good in, that's cool.
Yeah, so we already have.
Yeah. Okay. Let me come to the part where I'm breaking down the city department.
All right. Um. Next one, as an ongoing. Um, next one, as an ongoing aspiration. Look for funding sources to save and prepare for the new water treatment plant.
You tell us, Will, what do you, what do you think of that?
Um, I think that's something that we would do anyway. But maybe if I'm not here and we have a more conventional city manager, we might want to remind him or her. About that objective. So I I think it's a good thing to keep in mind. We should be seeking.
Yeah.
To look for any revenue concepts, not e- not necessarily even governmental ones. To help with the water plan. So for example.
Grants.
I'm going to be hitting the Rotary up for money. Through their water fund that they had their international Rotary Water Fund. To help with our water plant, which is not a normal thing to think of. But that's an idea. I had another idea, which is to create a. Eh, a a club of local notables who might want to put in some money to help build a part of the war. So those are the sorts of things we would try to do.
Put their name on the on a brick.
Yes.
Person.
Yes.
A brick program or wall of fame or something like that.
Do we have a line item in the budget for this, or is that?
No, it's, well, in a, well, yes and no. Yes, in the sense that it's in the SDC table and it's also in the rates model. No, in the sense that it's not in the next two biennia, so it will not appear in the capital improvement program that you're about to see. It's a bit further out.
Least four years. So any money that you incur, that would go. In one of those funds.
Yes, if we were to attract funding, we would move it into one of the city's capital lines. As a triple zero income line to save towards. And that's, that's the thing, folks, of course, as you all know, four zeros is an income line.
Yeah, I like keeping in there. It keeps it, it's just saying, hey, we're, this is on the horizon.
Keep it in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Uh, and if anyone's got a hotline for Mr. Bezos, can you just ask him to cause a check? I'm all about that too.
Or even one.
Yeah.
Any of them.
I've got more.
Okay. Develop ways to help the wine industry committee. As a continuing goal. These are all continuing ideas.
Why just that one committee?
Well, that's the ad hoc committee.
No, it's, yeah. Oh, that, I know what you mean. You know, talking about paint Newburgh.
This, this was the the new ad hoc committee that's spooling up.
Yeah, I mean, they have. They have a lot of aspirations where, you know, they really wanna take Newburgh to the next level. We have a designation of wine country, um, just. Overall. Increasing tourism around that, does, you know, that sort of thing. We need more, I don't know, how to word it. It's something that's up and coming, that is something that we're working on that.
Does it resonate?
Is important.
I don't think it's necessary.
No, no.
I think, don't we have one or two, um.
Yes, any S's.
Council members on them.
Well, I think we should be supporting all of our committees if. And in some way, shape, form, and the the people that are on those committees. Are, we're gonna start reporting back to the council.
Okay, so that's a, that's a good counterpoint.
I feel like we're already doing it because we have three council members on the, I'm sorry, Jerry, I just jumped in. We have three council members on the committee.
Is there three? Is there just two?
Great.
Oh, Jerry.
So, con- conceptually, I like it. I wonder about like expanding it out to reflect that. The goals around supporting growth and development of all of our industries, like while maintaining the character and charm of Newburgh, like supporting, like. Light industrial and wine and tourism as part of the whole goal.
Do you feel, though, perhaps, you might suggest? That that may be somewhat diluting it to fall in more in the line of what public service is?
Yeah. Well, we know that the wine industry is one of our biggest poles. I mean, that's why people are coming to Newburgh is to sample all our wines. We have the most wineries, not necessarily in Newburgh, but in the Anvil County of any other place in the state. So that is why people are coming here. You know, I know.
I'm going to college.
Yes, but that is our main tourism. So that's why we were thinking. They wanna make it more robust. They wanna increase, like NAPA, I mean, we. They wanna increase awareness, just, you know, overall.
And.
Labeling ourselves, noting that Newburgh, this is what Newburgh is. Yes, we have other industries, but, you know, this is kinda, and when you. Kind of.
It's the label for.
The label, thank you, yes. That helps with tourism and that's. You know, that brings in T L T, that, that is a, a huge funding source for the city. When you say, hey, this is wine country, all those people, and that's what taste is doing. I just.
I don't disagree with one thing Robin said. I'm just not sure why it needs to be up here.
Okay, oh, can we, can we do a quick poll maybe?
Sure.
If that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Go hands. Could so, could you raise your hand if you think we we do need this explicitly like this?
Read the statement again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Interfolds.
Um, it is. Develop ways to help the wine industry committee.
And I think I wrote that goal when I'm trying to think. How would that involve council? What we would do, Bill?
I, I, okay. Well, I was just gonna say, I, maybe we could change it to. Um, develop ways that the city can help all aspects of businesses here in Newburgh. So you're not just picking out one, but you're encompassing everything.
Huge bite.
I know, but that's like what Will says, it dilutes it.
One, one thing that, that I see is these wineries have money to invest. And I would very much like to see them invest in the new waterfront district. Uh, I think that would be a big draw for tourism. I think it would draw people to that part of Newburgh. And it's brand new. There's a wide open slate, so that's, that's kind of where I'm seeing us being able to help them.
Susan, supporting the wine industry committee specifically, or is it supporting all of the amazing things that Robin said?
Yeah.
Which will be facilitated in parts through.
Yeah.
The industry. I think I might feel better about it if we like expanded it just a smidge or they. We're gonna do all of the, I can't see anything except to be a part of that, but like, so as part of this, like supporting Newburgh and.
Tourism development.
Tourism development.
Branding.
Wine industry.
Maybe something like maybe. Uh, develop ways to help the wine industry flourish.
Tourism should be in included in that.
The wine industry and tourism flourish.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
I'd probably put tourism first.
Yeah, yeah, let's put tourism.
Okay.
Okay, I like that better.
Does that capture like the waterfront development that you mentioned about?
Well, that's, I mean, we certainly had that in, but I think that should, I think we should put that in people's heads, that. They have the resources to develop that area and, you know, and everything they do is for the cabinet.
So associated like economic development.
Develop ways to help tourism and the wine industry flourish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice to use that voice during storytimes, by the way. Did you like that voice?
Oh, yeah. That was very soothing.
See, that's what they want you to do. Very good storytelling, Mr. Will. Okay, uh, the next one is. Did you get that? Thank you, sir. And meet with state representatives frequently to lobby for a simplification of the process. For U G B expansion. Now, I think this is a good aspirational goal, but knowing this state. I am not convinced that we will have much leverage in that regard. Even if we paid for a fancy lobbyist. And there are so many opposite lobbies that are going the other way. But I'm just throwing that out there, so.
That's time. Who's gonna be doing that meeting? People like Scott?
I would stick more probably on the political front, more like people like the mayor, people like myself. When we go to LOC city, badly, I am gonna do this when we go there. I'm gonna go like, hey, guys, can we not have a more. Structured way where if you have a certain, um. If you meet the points criteria of some sort, it cannot be open to legal appeal. Is, yes, Scott.
I speak freely.
Oh, please, please speak freely, Scott.
So I think what you're maybe leaning into is some sort of government affairs strategy. That would focus on urban growth boundary and that line board. And we have no program or apparatus around intergovernmental, other than apart from what the council does. The staff do not have any intergovernmental affairs, uh, direction or resource in. Or strategy, other than apart from myself and a few of our staff. As time allows, attending the Oregon City meetings at a staff level, not elected official level. To learn and understand what's coming up in the legislature, what the agencies are doing and promulgate the rules. So we have just enough time to sort of stay on top of what's coming at us and trying to react to it, but not position the city for. Um, initiating new legislation or lobbying. So if you're interested in that and you wanna make that a goal, I just wanted to understand what we currently. And that Will and the mayor and others are going to engage with elected, other elected officials. We would want to support you to the extent we, we can with the technical research and understanding what these bills and these rules mean with the. You know, pros and cons. So that's what I've experienced in other jurisdictions that do have the resources, that have government affairs staff, that have municipal lobbyists. They have that apparatus, and even with all of that, there are also. Headwinds and trying to change the, the paradigm.
Yeah. It does help Scott, and to Scott's point, you might conceive of a paid lobbyist as well as. Some policy analysts, like a policy analyst one and two. That's the kind of funding that you would have to create to to lean into that, other than in our normal day-to-day.
We already kind of do communicate with electeds anyway. I mean, you meet with Andrea Salinas.
I'm not one to start a fight that I don't think I can win. And unless if you were going to challenge the the viability of D L C D, you're not gonna win this fight, so. I I just don't see any reason putting resources into trial.
Strike it.
We're already doing that.
I think, I think strike it, and if you wanna go to those meetings and have those discussions, do it.
Yeah.
But we don't need to, I don't know that we needed in our goal.
Yeah, I would agree.
Be committed.
Strike it.
We're, we're, we're going to be, um, first time I've ever had the time to go to the Oregon Cities meeting in Salem. And we're gonna be talking to our representatives, and there's several things we're gonna be bringing up.
Good.
And although our philosophies are somewhat different from other cities, looking at the LOC list of things they want us to campaign on. Um, I'm gonna be asking about holy and why they charge things the way they charge, because it's very bureaucratic. And we're gonna certainly mention our urban growth boundary and and its susceptibility to challenges.
Well, this, uh, I mean, at the beginning, the first problem is the cost of just doing the studies to make an application. So there there's no benefit to these studies. They're all designed for us not to be able to have a successful application. And yet they require any city our size to do it.
Yep. Okay, so here's another new thought. Further strategic coordinated planning and growth. With local taxing districts. So that is, um, in a more programmatic way, and I don't know who added this, but it's an interesting thought. In a more programmatic way, meet with our other. Local taxing districts, one might think of P C C.
V F and R.
C P R D, T V F and R, the school district, eh, have, bring back that sort of meeting process. Which. Could be of value to coordinate strategy.
Right.
Well, we do.
Well, I mean, that's what we used to do years and years ago, uh, when I was on the board for the Parker Rec is. We did it on, uh, usually twice a year, we would get together with school districts, C P R D, the city. Everybody and just do some, how can we coordinate? So we're not duplicating things? How can we work together on a variety of different things? I mean. Yeah, I I think we gotta bring that back. I think it's a good, good tool for us to just to keep things.
It could be very timely because the one, the only bright note about losing brilliant clay. To those rascals is that we probably will be able to have much better communications and relationships. With our district at this time.
Yeah.
Will, would you do me a favor and read, or us a favor, read that one more time?
Yeah, as as many times as you need. Further strategic coordinated planning and growth with local taxing districts.
You need coordinated in there since you're further planning and broke with other taxing districts. It doesn't matter. It's, I think it's, we send this, that's okay.
Can I make a comment?
No, you might be right, rock coordinated. I think, I think Peggy is right to rock coordinated. Um, further strategic planning and growth with local taxing districts.
So these goals to me represent solving a problem. I mean, that's the goal that I came up with is issues that I'm seeing need work on. I don't. You, in my opinion, I, I don't see that as an issue right now. We already talked with them. Do you guys? I mean, is this a problem we need to solve, or do we just wanna bolster?
Yes.
And I think to Robin's point, um, like a lot of this stuff that we're talking about is, uh, looking towards the future, like, okay. So you guys, we're already kind of doing that. We already have especially members on the city advisory council.
True.
And that's, I think, where a lot of this stuff is going to take place.
We're communicating with them. I don't know if I see that as a goal.
Well, I, I agree, it's not a problem-solving one, but what about a problem prevention, you know, being, um. Taking, I don't wanna say affirmative action, but we've had, get on the front end of it and and may. Well, I think we do have mainly good relationships with those, but we could actually be much more intentional. To determine areas we could work together, save everybody money.
You were a bit blindsided by the fallen valley fire and rescue the other day.
Yes.
Oh. Oh, okay, right.
Yeah, I, 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 I thought that before they went, and and no offense to you, Scott. I thought before they went to pre-app processes, we would have a meeting with them first on the strategic level to talk about. Their dreams and aspirations, and that did not happen. But T V F and R frequently does not seem to want to talk to us much unless they want something from us.
Hmm.
Why do you sell Derek and have a conversation?
Maybe.
What's that?
The fire chief called me.
Yeah. Cause, cause it's like we don't, anyway, we sidelined the conversation, but you're, you're correct, Mr. Mayor. I was surprised that. Kind of felt like the, the horse and the cart were in the wrong spots, right? You know.
The way it appeared.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, you know, we're never on two tracks. Their P I O did reach back out to me, so we're gonna set up a meeting. So.
And and corrected you.
Yeah, but that's okay, broad shoulders. And so keep this.
I actually, now that I think about it, in our relationship with the school district, that could be bolstered. I mean, we're, so.
Okay.
Something that.
Yeah.
I mean, draw coordinated, because I believe Chancellor Kilburg is correct.
Can you read it again?
Yep. Further strategic planning and growth with local taxing districts.
Yep, that sounds good.
Wait, you're planning, okay.
It doesn't necessarily mean planning in the Scott sense.
I see it as relationship building. Is that?
But it could also end up being accomplishing things together.
Mm-hmm, but I'd also like to bolster relationships.
I think that would happen with this.
Okay. Whatever you guys think, I just.
We will make sure that with the clay there.
Yeah, I know.
Great relationships.
He's gonna be.
We won't kick him in the ankles.
Oh, the, oh, valley, that, that's awesome.
All right, um, shall we, the food is here?
Oh.
Shall we break to eat?
Lunch.
Wow.
Wow, I've known that with ten seconds.
No, you, well said.
Yeah, it woke us up. Now it's gonna make us sleepy, you know.
Fifty dollars. You know.
That. Well, I'm suggesting this line is. I was.
It's a lot of different things.
You know, some of those are just directional on what what they're doing.
Did second street because it was about. So we've preserved it longer than it should.
Yeah, yeah, and I know we have overall ones, but maybe that is why.
For instance, you don't have. Okay. Yeah, sorry.
Don't worry.
None of that, I asked. Anyway, I just. I have stolen into a job.
Yeah, it's so hard to see.
I can't hear it.
Yeah, I'm still hearing you.
So I love, love when I get to. I make sure that I work for inspiration. There we go, part of the good stuff. That tried to get why disorder but they don't.
They're good. I try to eat green.
That is, well, I've heard you say, don't feed me anything healthy, so you know, I've just got. Oh, you sent it to me at least once. I haven't emailed.
Okay, all right.
I'm teasing you.
Also have them assigned to a precious negotiation or any kind of swat. They're assigned to the correctional.
Okay, folks, here we go. And the next thing is. For every new resolution or ordinance that we pass, there must be two old ones removed from the books. Oh. And. This could be possible for ordinances, but not for resolutions. Because resolutions are used to capture, uh, decisions to buy things or to authorize things. And the other thing is, if we, if we do this. It will definitely slow down our legislative process because we'll have to do research before we do each new ordinance. We would have to locate. Not just perhaps the one that we're going to repeal to do the new one, but we would also have to find a second one. That, um, so. Anyway.
I think it could stay at the level that would be acceptable, but at the city level, I think that, you know, she's going through the regulations. Uh, yeah, she, I'm sorry, Rachel's going through the regulations, so.
And Scott's work plan has a thorough going review of some of those sections. And the the planning to get to see what needs to be.
Use the red pen.
Yeah, someone really wanted to, yeah, I think what's being done then is adequate.
Was this?
You may get to a point where you like, can't find another one to get rid of, but we really need this.
Right. But in cities.
I agree with Phil.
In cities, kind of unlike the the feds, shall we say, there is a tendency for in cities to repeal the old one when you do a new one. So there hasn't really been a growth in our code, certainly not in the last three and a half years. And. There's, there's a handful of things that we know we need to modernize, but. So I'm I'm suggesting that probably that is not necessary.
What was the intent to remove more? Government overreach or to slim down government?
I mean, well, that was, that was mine that I put in. I just wanted to, I I didn't know if this has gone for years and years and years. How many of them are stacked up that don't even apply to us anymore? And so that's why I thought, why not? Simplify things as much as possible, but I, excuse me, I do, I do see that. You know, if Scott's department and stuff has to put a lot of extra staff in it, the time. That could slow things down, but I mean, I, I don't know.
Here's the thing, when I came in, I discovered, how many executive orders were there?
There were forty seven.
Thank you. So one of the things I did is I found four, I found forty seven city manager executive orders. Which believe.
I didn't know city managers could do that.
I didn't know.
Legally, they can, but it's bizarre.
Hmm.
So, um, yes, completely bizarre. The the purpose, the purpose for them is that if there's an emergency and everybody's incapacitated, they can still do things. But the ones I found were inappropriate uses of that authority.
Yeah.
And I have repealed them all. I wrote one document that said. It is the city manager's opinion that these sorts of actions should only be done in the case of a declared emergency. I hereby repeal all of them. So we removed. Forty seven documents and they were all things like buying a truck or buying a boat. Or things like that. It should never have been done that way. So the city currently has an entire class of object that we have already completely removed.
Right.
Cause it's, that's just not an appropriate use of that authority.
Well, it sounds like as things come up, we edit, check, remove. So we're kind of as we go, like she's doing it right now. So it is a process that we're currently doing.
It's a standard to do a recodification every five to ten years anyways, which means that we check our code against state law and clean things up. So this is something that's kind of a process already, um, and I'm finding things like the cable commission that we still have in our code that we need to get rid of, so.
Yeah, so we're doing this.
Yeah, so two things that we, I mean, I've got a small binder of things from my review of the code that I've found. And of course, I didn't look at your section, cause I don't need to. So I looked at other sections and there's about twelve, thirteen items that. Maybe of marginal use and three or four that are of no use.
Right.
And we are going to repeal those.
Okay.
It's like the cigarette vending machine officer thing. Like, we don't have to have a cigarette vending machine manager, right?
Wow, that's what, that's what, in general, that's what we were trying to tell us, right, too.
Right. Okay, so as long as, actually, give me a favor. And I'm gonna make you do this, cause as soon as you can grow and learn, I would like you to write a draft. For a resolution to repeal the cigarette. Um.
Take all my power, so yes, for a vending machine.
The cigarette vending machine coordination thing, let's repeal that, that's silly. Okay. Right, so the next one, um, sorry, Mike, but with all due respect.
Sorry, don't worry.
It's, it says push the state to prove that the gas tax money is coming to the cities. And not being paid out for other things. We don't have a way to do that.
Can we, I guess what I was more referring to is. If we could send them an official letter on behalf of the city council, cause I, quite frankly. I've heard for years and since I've been on the council, I've always seemed to, uh, understood, understand that. We get less and less gas tax money every year. And I, I personally believe they're squandering the funds. I don't think they're giving it to the cities like they're supposed to. And so if we could send an official letter that we would, we were. We're asking that it ought to be done. I wanna just make sure, or maybe this goes through our local reps. I don't know, but I would like to see.
I think there's an, I think there's an easier way if you want to do an investigation on this, there's an easier way.
Okay.
Fill out a public information request asking to see their budget. And and send it, send it to them and then we'll get their budget for the gasoline tax program and then we can look at it.
Well, we do know that they are spending, forcing us to spend the money on bike trails, pedestrian trails, what else?
Um, sometimes the bulbous don't seem to make a ton of sense where they put them. There's.
And in my opinion, that should never come out of the gas tax. You know, that's not what it was intended for. It's supposed to be for roads.
It's in the law.
Right, but you know, you're preaching to the choir, Mike, but we don't have an ability to push them to do anything.
Well.
They're very evil overlords.
But if, oh, I know, we can't push them, but if we could, I don't know, once every six months, once a year. We send an official letter, we want an audit done to show where the money is going to and what is being spent on. We have a right as a, as a city within this state to ask for accountability.
Yeah, I'm, I'm taking nothing away.
No, I I know, but I'm just, I'm just reiterating my position of why I put that down.
Sure, I think, I think the.
But if it's not resolating, resoluting, or if it's not working with everybody else, I, and I'm not gonna die on this hill.
You know, so I mean, I think though, you bring up a good point, one thing we could do though is. Send. An information request to get the budget or that segment of ODOTs. Cause I can word an information request, so they can't easily not fulfill it.
Sure.
I could write it very carefully.
But how much are they gonna charge us though for that?
They can't.
They can't, oh.
No, because it should be a document, it should be at their fingertips, it should be a very small amount of work. You're only allowed to charge people if there's substantial staff time.
Okay.
I would ask for the last year's budget, one that's already published, or actually last biennium, sorry, for the state. So I'd ask for the, for that, we can do that and then we can get it and look at it.
If nobody asks for that, when nobody's holding them accountable and they will bill for the money in a variety of different ways.
Well. So my husband works for the city of Tigard and he seems to think they, their gas tax is not being reduced. My concern is they're reducing ours by five percent, but maybe not other communities. Is that true? Why are they picking and choosing?
Reduction by five percent, what do you mean?
That's what you said, ODOT. Well, okay, ODOT has reduced their funding from us due to gas, a waning gas tax.
So.
So.
So it, 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 two years back, it, it was a little. This rejection for the current gas tax revenue we're in right now, it, their prediction is it's going to be flat. Not up, not down, but relatively flat. However, in terms of purchasing power. Flat means less.
Yeah.
Minus, yeah, grounded in like. Or less Elliott Road.
Well, I was just concerned that they weren't dispersing the money equitably, you know, so cities.
I don't know.
That's what I'm cur- curious about. Are they giving us less? Are they giving other cities more? Is it based on population? That's what I'm.
One of the, uh, goals for the current legislature is to raise the gas tax to a dollar ninety a gallon, I understand. I don't know if it's been introduced yet or if it's gonna get out of committee.
Rumors about that.
That's, uh, that's all because of the amount of money they're charging truckers. They've been charging them too much and have to equalize it or reduce the trucker's amount.
Yeah.
What is it now?
I think to.
Oh, like twenty cents.
To conduct an analysis in this area, what, what we would, I, I would suggest is what we would do is run an information request and then look at it. Data they provide us with.
Yeah.
But, okay, but how does that affect the city? That's not, that doesn't really affect how we do day to day business. I mean, it's just information, so.
But the information would contain their distribution line items. So we know what to see. So we should see if we're receiving the appropriate proportion of, based upon per capita, which is supposed to be.
Okay, that's right, okay.
That's where you, I mean, you get into the detail, but it could easily be done. And I think the the turnaround time on that, I don't know what it would be, but it's certainly not something they should charge us for. Okay, so, um, encourage the people of Newburgh to pray for the councillors and city employees. That we are given wisdom to make good decisions, additional council remarks, please. Seek God's favor for, uh, after all, the town was founded on godly principles. So while this is a noble aspiration. I would suggest that this is very hard to measure and achieve as a policy position. But I do, but I did come up with an alternative suggestion that would achieve the same ends. Although this is between you guys, is a proclamation during. The annual national day of prayer period. Would seem to be more appropriate than having this as a strategic item. If that is something that the mayor desires to do, then his.
I did it last year.
Yeah, I like it. Oh, you did do it last year?
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, we were gonna do it as a city. We'd have to put all on there and, uh, I don't know, some which. Priestess would be somebody else.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I mean, I would think that prayer could be kept generic in terms of which faith group it is, maybe. Maybe we, we aren't a foul of anything, we just said prayer generally. We're not saying thou shalt pray as a Presbyterian shall pray.
Right, right.
That would be wrong.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I can say, and Bill's on the committee too, working on the, the annual.
The annual mayor's prayer breakfast. This year there will be an emphasis. On praying year round with actually a bookmark handed out with thirty one days of prayer requests to be repeated each month. To focus on different aspects of our community. So anyway, kind of it will accomplish that, those who participate in that.
They could tie into that too. That resource could be refreshed or reminded to people through the proclamation process.
You could even make them available more, more available for. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, next one. Look for ways to fund road repair and to remove the tough fee from the utility bill. Now. I don't know if. Um. A gasoline tax. I don't know what yield that would have, whether it would be sufficient revenue to be able to look at removing the tough line item.
You mean a local gasoline tax?
Yes. I don't know how much revenue that would bring in. I was going to suggest an alternative wording. To that goal. Develop a report to investigate the revenue. That would be generated. And this is the numbers you suggested. By a two or three cent gasoline tax. With a view to implementing this revenue stream to supplement or replace.
Yeah.
The current tough. So in other words. We don't know what we don't know yet.
Right.
But we could run, we could. Make it a goal to figure that out.
Can we say one cent? Cause I know nearby cities only have a one cent.
Oh, you say.
All right.
Yes, I have the pictures in my phone. I've gone around Sherwood, King City, Tiger. They all have a one cent gas tax. Right.
I don't think one cent though is gonna make.
I don't know.
Any difference, but I think we ought to look at, at getting some information. Well, what a one cent. Two or three, I mean, three cents a gallon, I don't think is going to kill anybody's.
But whenever you say tax, people flip out.
Well, I know, but and I would, I would suggest that if we. Do this. It needs to go to a vote. People need to vote on it. But. I think we need the information. I'd like to see what does that bring to us? Three cents? Yeah.
But I want to know what other communities are doing too. So it's not like Newburgh is this outlier.
Sure. I mean, there's a, there's a whole bunch of research to do here about.
Does that need charging? I think they had one at one time. I heard that they had one, yeah.
Scott, I have to be honest, this one I think will hit your plate a little bit. I'm going to need help with the research if we do this. Yes.
What about um these charging stations? Do they charge any kind of tax? Or I mean, we're going to talk about gasoline tax, we don't want gasoline, right? Like people are using less gasoline, right? Like we're buying electric cars.
But those are on private property. I don't know.
Not all of them, right?
We can still.
I like that. I like where you're taking.
I I too. I I also think that's fair. Given the extra curb weight of electric vehicles, because they do more damage to which services.
Yeah.
Um. We can definitely widen the scope of this to include looking at, is there a mechanism by which we could create? Some taxation from the electric charging stations that there are, and there will be more of them. Um.
Yeah, is there a way? Cause I don't know if you can do that. I know the gas tax, that's okay to do. I mean, it's statewide, but I don't know.
It's just a different form of energy.
It's something that should, it's something that, yeah, it's great. Based on time or.
Good point.
Yeah. Well, cause that's why we're not getting as much gas tax, because people are moving to EV.
No, that's, that's what they're saying. That's not true. Electric vehicles are are like one. Percent of all the vehicles in Oregon. That's just what the Green New Deal people want to be telling us, and that's not true.
You don't think it is?
Nope.
So why is there a tax? Okay, well, cars are more fuel efficient.
Generally, they're spending it in other places. They're maybe using it for. You know, bicycle or or sidewalks or whatever, and that shouldn't be done. It should be strictly for roads.
And maybe we have high risk cars are more efficient.
Then by us getting that information, we can let that out. And get some, some spotlights on it. Maybe people will start rising up and saying, I don't think so. You know, we shouldn't be doing this.
Okay, let's have a standard making this sentence work, shall we? Um, develop a report to investigate the revenue. That would be generated by a number to be debated.
Right.
Gasoline tax and EV charging tax with a view to. Implementation of this revenue stream to supplement or replace the current tough.
Don't need the word implementation of this revenue stream.
Okay. Uh.
Don't pay you, go.
Go pay.
Just one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Develop the report investigative revenue that we generated by gasoline tax and EV charging tax. The only thing about two thousand and this is they have all kinds of tours coming here.
That's right.
Instead of the tough tabs, does local people pay?
It spreads it out, bro.
Yes, it's, yes, so.
The question is how much gas is actually sold in there? Is it enough to do it?
It's gonna help.
Well, okay.
Back to the pennies. Debate.
Because two to the weeds, right? I mean, one penny, you can multiply that by two or three pennies later on down the road.
Shall I make it one, two, three pennies?
Yes.
Yeah, I think if you just do one, then you can always multiply that one, right? I mean, that's what I was made.
That's where I am.
You can also just model it, see whether it would take me to replace the top, so you know.
Oh, that's a good point.
It's gonna be very high.
All right.
Calibrated.
Yeah.
Just no percentage at all.
What he said, what he said. Okay, so, so. Um, develop a report to investigate. The revenue that would be generated by a gasoline tax and EV charging tax. To supplement or replace the current tough. We'll look at both things. We'll come up with a number based around a penny or we'll look at the tough revenue.
Mm hmm.
Um, I already know the tough revenue off the top of my head is one point one million dollars per se right now. That is what tough we get. I've become far too educated in terms of construction hours.
Well, that's good.
Okay, replace over the gas tax, we'd have to sell hundreds of millions gallons of gas here. At one time.
Then find out.
Yeah, sounds right. Well, we'll be selling it here.
No, I don't either.
Okay, and then of course, don't forget, we'd have to tax ourselves probably.
Individually?
No, I mean, as a city.
Oh, yeah.
Because of the, we buy it from Brett Hauser or wherever they are that we, right? Um, okay. That's cool. Uh. Growth of medium sized business within city limits. Pursue light industrial annexation when able. But I'm saying I think we don't need this because of project goal two.
Correct, yeah.
Which already captured that thought.
Yeah.
Yes, I think I I honestly think that's already captured.
Okay, give it a whirl.
Wait.
Look at us, speaking to us.
You're tracking down? Thank you, sir. Okay. Right, the next two are things that we definitely can do, but they will require me to add more staff.
Well, cut them off then. Not just.
What are they?
So. The transparent street improvement timeline for residents. Okay, now. Let me explain. With the staffing I have right now. In terms of engineering project managers and field inspectors. And some part of public works maintenance. We are able to develop a street plans. On an annual basis. Because. Beyond that, for year two and three, we have to fix other pipes or. Uh ramps or whatever we're forced to do. To be able to do that year's stuff. And that year's stuff currently is about seven road sections. Which is what we can afford to do. If we were going to try. To build a plan longer into the future. I would need a. Somebody in engineering. To more detail coordinate future pipe replacements. And other things ahead of road replacement. We'd have to have a, I need another body. Because. I can show the residents what we're going to do next summer and we've already published that. And I can always show the residents what we're going to do next summer. But if you want me to show the residents what we're going to do the summer after that and the summer after that, that means I need to plan my pipe replacements. Six and seven years out. I don't have any bandwidth for that.
Yeah.
Without a new body in engineering.
What about the engineering firm that we use? Couldn't they? Pick up some of that slack to.
Yeah, they could charge us for that, yeah.
I mean, I think the timeline is sufficient. I don't. I'm not sure what.
Well, the timeline right now is that in December, we meet, we have a meeting. This maybe this is all new, like everything else in the state. So we have a meeting with all the stakeholders and we choose what street sections. Have stuff under them. We think we can get to.
Yeah.
In the next year. And that meeting happens in December. Then on in January, I start calling the contractors and see if I can line any of them up to get sections done. So this, it's only a one year look ahead right now.
I think what? I do too. I think citizens. Would appreciate even a year. Look out and.
I think, yeah.
Not as.
It's on my Facebook.
Interested as.
It's on my Facebook thing. More than one year? No, no. I think, I think we just stayed to one year, so. Yeah, that's fine.
Now, not really a strategic planning thing, but just so you know, it's hard for me to, these guys are hard to line up.
Yes, sir.
I I talked to the Mid Willamette Valley Cog and asked if they would be interested in launching a brand new program. To do grinding in Lee on behalf of all of the cities of Young Hill County. So we would have an automatic spigot to go to. Instead of bargaining for these with these regional companies, because they want to give us a tiny bit of their time. In their workflow and they're heading south with the weather. They want to roll through our town, do a little bit and get onto Arizona or whatever.
Well, well, what about some of the local like signature paving?
Thirty percent more expensive.
Thirty percent more expensive?
Yes.
So we're going with these because they're the lowest?
Yes.
Okay, and they're hard to get in.
Because under procurement law, as well as our purchasing manual, we're supposed to seek the lowest. So. I can say with confidence. Cause when I, when I got involved in engineering, I did a brand new RFP process to get cheapest rates. And so North Santium is the cheapest rate for complete road construction. Doolittle is the cheapest rate for slurry seal and chip seal. And for grinding in Lee, it is Eagle Elsner. With Knife River slightly behind. So that that's the cheapest providers of this service, but the big guys like Doolittle. They, they. He's ignoring my email right now, Mike. I've emailed him and I'm trying to line him up, but he wants to line up all his other jobs and then answer me later because they're a little fish.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah, it's it's kind of tough. So. Don't add a staff member?
Oh.
No.
Okay. Okay. And next one, similar thing. I need to add a staff member to do this. Advocacy and connection for working family resources through NGO and faith based partners.
I don't know what they are redoing.
What is that all about?
I don't know what that means. What does that look like?
My understanding of what this would be is to coordinate efforts from different groups in the community. To achieve these goals.
No, that's not our role.
But.
Even exactly.
Now, I could do this with an admin assistant. Just this wouldn't be, this is more expensive because this is buying engineering. This I could do with an admin assistant, a good admin assistant. But that's eighty five thousand dollars, you know.
I guess I'd want to know.
I don't, I still don't understand.
Is there evidence that there, it's not happening now that these?
The churches and nonprofits are already talking and working with each other. We're, I don't think we need to be stepping into the middle of it.
We'll say we all.
That's already happening is what you're saying. Yeah, we have Y cap, the churches, loving.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not feeling a ground spell of yes to that.
Yes to mixing it or yes to?
Yes to keeping it. Okay. So like I said, we we gave that a good hard think about what it would cost, so.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah. All right, so that concludes this exercise. And I think. Mister Mayor, if it's all right with you. Maybe the thing to do is for us to compile what we've already done and I'm going to, I presume I will read it one more time for everybody. Then. And the the motion might be to bring a draft document to the council chamber. And or a uh consent item.
And it can turn on.
As a consent item.
Sure.
As a resolution. Does that sound okay? Cause then at that meeting, if you guys decide to pull it back out and have some more discussions, you can take it back out of content.
Yeah, they. They'll be able to read it over and if they disagree, then we can discuss it.
Yep.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, I'm going to read them all though, if that's all right with you.
Now.
Yeah.
We we like hearing your soothing voice.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Okay, you should reading. Okay, so first of all, you have to, are you ready? Very easily, yes. That's how you make little children breathe. You make them go. And then you go, the. More we get together, together, together. The more we get together, the happier we'll be. Cause your friends are my friends, my friends are your friends. The more we get together, the happier we'll be. Yay. Thank you for putting this through.
I, I moved that we replaced the management report with that once a month.
You gave us more than we asked for.
All right, we have motioned it down.
I'll thank you, Brad.
Yeah, but then I'm looking at the first thing, all my old files, remembering all my other songs and stories. Okay. Here we go. And by the way, as we do this, if any of these. Feel that they should be moved over here. And if any of these feel that they should be moved over here, this is a good time. We can still do that.
So this is categorized as projects.
Projects with a finished date and timeless. These are continuous aspirations, thinking. Okay, yeah. Uh, continue to create and maintain a high level of customer service objective. Create the departmental customer service standard for each department before July twenty twenty six. This is part two of the customer service guide. Two, continue to streamline the process for issuing building permits. Implement open golf and other steps. Okay. Next, identify industrial land and attract employers to encourage family wage jobs. Objective. Make application to bring land into the urban growth boundary to zone or light ma- manufacturing within five years. Bullying out of the goals for now, but to be researched. Implement a vacant land, a vacant industrial land tax to spur development. Well, I'll see if it's legal. I'll bring it back if it.
Okay.
But not in the primary list, done. Just a crazy thought. Okay, goal two, goal three, enhance community safety. Work with Newburgh School District to provide an additional school resource officer. This can be removed after we have a signed contract. Install red light and speed cameras and other speed reduction measures within two years. Starting from scratch. Goal four, create and maintain a high level transparency with our residents in order to build trust. Objective one, expand communication outreach in regards to regular city events. And additional involvement with city businesses by the end of twenty twenty six. Objective two. Develop new streamlined council roles to institutionalize our administrative enhancements. This will include the following enhancements from the last round of goal making. Work sessions prior to each decision item, seven day publication. Work sessions prior to each decision item, seven day publication schedule, executive summaries for council packet items. Greater than a hundred pages and a more streamlined parliamentary procedure. Goal five, implement a careful and prudent fiscal policy. Objective one, begin reducing and eventually eliminate the city's debt in a steady prudent way. Without compromising the city's ability to provide essential services and functions. Objective two, reduce elements of the municipal billing statement. Objective three. Ensure that the city has a long term financial plan that supports its goals and objectives. Objective four, as a secondary focus to the maintenance of our existing roads. We will explore the concept of converting small sections of gravel streets to modern paving. Goal six, revitalize and beautify the appearance and utility. Of Newburgh's downtown area. Objective one. In partnership with NDC, seek funding sources. To implement the main street program. Objective two, work with all stakeholders to explore. The creation of a historic designation for the downtown corridor within three years. Goal seven, preserve the balance between the needs of the tourism industry and preserving the character of our town. Objective one, implement and codify the new short term rental rules within one year. Objective two, act as a resource to assist the community in obtaining grants. To improve the city. With the option not written of having something on the masterpiece schedule, should we? Need to use it to capture some revenue. Okay. Continuous goals. If any of these seem more like they have a stake in the ground somewhere really visible, we will move them over. All of those seem to me to be fairly stake in the ground. All right. Ensure Newburgh infrastructure, roads, water, city employees is in good repair and supply. Section below that, review the capital improvement projects annually. Focus on roads and sidewalk improvements in district one and three. This all feels like ongoing rather than a project. Continue with community policing partnerships, SRO, youth work, anti addiction classes, citizens academy and more. Look for funding sources to save and prepare for the new water treatment plant. Develop ways to help tourism and the wine industry flourish. Further strategic planning and growth with local taxing districts. Develop a report to investigate the revenue. That would be generated by a gasoline tax and EV charging tax. To supplement or replace the current tough.
Did you skip the one at the very top of that page?
Uh, no, that's to encourage people to pray.
Oh, okay, we brushed that off.
Yeah, which we would do with a. And proclamation and possibly with some other materials. Okay, did any of these feel like they need to go that way?
I don't think so.
Okay.
May I suggest the one that's declaring writing a report is a set stone action that is getting them.
Into what?
The, the very last one is saying write a report, air a report, that's a set stone finish acts, actions.
It's tangible.
No, it's a report about the, the potential of a gas tax. Yeah, yeah.
Making eye contact with Mister Siegel back here. We, we want to add a timeline to that, it's reasonable. And how long might it take to do an analysis to prepare a report on options for gasoline and EV charging taxes?
Well, give us some time, we're refilling our planning manager position.
Right?
You, you want it, you want it faster than that, six months?
I was not thinking months, I was thinking a year.
We can say six months.
We'll give you some grace if you don't.
We'll give you seven. Seven months.
Give, give the gentleman a year and give him a chance to exceed our expectations.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Okay, so therefore, I am going to move that one. Move. Okay. And let's figure out where it goes.
At the very end of the second page.
Yeah, well, well, maybe like, but maybe, maybe it looks, you see if that's in with one of these.
Sure, sure.
And saving money and.
Oh, 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 yes, yes. So that be, just became.
Fiscal policy.
And objective five of the fiscal policy.
You're right, Mayor, she is cute. I mean, look at that, she just puts it right in up there.
That becomes fiscal. Objective five. All right.
Yeah.
Right, we all, yeah. Man, and. Can I see it? Strive.
Thank you to Dylan and Scott.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. End the meeting officially?
Yeah. At twelve twenty seven, this meeting is adjourned.